Hello, this is Jack Spillane and welcome to the chat. The chat is our livestream video conference at the New Bedford Light. And we've been doing a series of chats with the candidates in the Ward three race. And tonight we have Common Oliver, Common Emerald and Sean Oliver. I get those right, who are the finalists in the Ward three race. They finished number one and two, Sean finishing first and Common second. We're going to go a little bit more in depth than we did in the preliminary debate. And welcome, Common, and welcome, Sean.
Thank you, Jack, for setting this up and inviting us to do that.
Thanks, Jack. Appreciate it.
First, I just want to tell you both that I'm inspired by this campaign. Both of your abilities to go door to door. I know how much door to door you guys have done. The attracting the support of your family, friends and colleagues. It's really been inspiring. What three has had some challenges in recent years, but this campaign? Nobody can complain that there weren't good candidates and hardworking candidates. And you're a credit to New Bedford and whoever wins. I think you both done a great job, so just wanted to get that out. First of all.
Thank you.
So I will ask everybody to try to keep their answers to about two minutes. Only because if it gets longer than that, it's hard for the public to stay with us. And I think that most things can be given in a two or three, three minute answer. So the first question I want to start with is constituent services. Constituent Services has been the issue of this campaign. More people have mentioned that to me than any other issue. People have said that that's what's most important in the, in the voters whose doors they've knocked on. Of course, everybody wants to deliver good constituent services. Everybody wants to get their sidewalk fixed or their street light fixed or a traffic sign put in. But there is a process for that. And several mayors have complained that people who are department heads, who are doing favors for certain city councils, get to have people go to the front of the line when somebody else who didn't know a city councillor doesn't get their, their streetlight fixed or their sidewalk fixed or their tree cut as quick. And you can see there was controversy recently where seven or eight department heads got big raises. And some people speculated that that was payback for people who had done favors for councils. The councils, of course, deny that. But so I just want to ask you both tonight. I know constituent services are important, but isn't there something to be said for letting these, these requests go through the mayor's office? And then letting the chips fall with a may and it being more of a communication issue on your part than getting the streetlight fixed? So we'll start with Sean. What do you think about that? Is there a downside to constituent services?
Um, well, I mean, I think, like you said, constituent services for some way or another has looked like it's about favor doing. And obviously, when you're in this type of work, it is, you do build these relationships with different department heads or people that work within the city government and the municipal workers. But I don't look at it as doing favors. At least that's not how I would approach it. It's the biggest thing is, listen, really, really letting these folks know this is an issue, it needs to get resolved in a timely manner. And not so much, hey, trying to grease wheels or get things done, but having that open communication as far as this is an issue that's been ongoing and just being that relentless voice. Sometimes as we go on door to door, a lot of people think that their voice is falling on deaf ears. Well, as councillors, I'm sure the councillors feel that way sometimes too. When they reach out to these department heads that, hey, I've come to you a few times. But it's just really being that, that relentless voice for the people who feel like they don't have a voice in us to get things done. So you, it's, it really is up to the councils to just not so much look, be doing favors, but just the continuous following through and following up. So you follow through with the request and continue to follow up to see, to check on that status. And, you know, I think that these, those folks will get a little tired of somebody doing that. And it'll get, just get done normally when it, when requested upon.
Okay, Common, is there a downside to constituent services? Can there be a conflict of interest for the councils, maybe best left to the mayor's office?
Well, I mean, first constituent services is the, one of the top reasons that anybody, including myself, runs for city council, right? You want to make sure that the people in the community, their needs are being met. So of course, helping pick up the trash, fix the streetlight, fix the pothole. You being available, listening to people. I do think it is the role of the city council to hold these different departments accountable. Accountability is incredibly important. I, you know, I know I've talked about the, the city services app before. It actually tells you how long ago incidents were reported and if they've been resolved or not. So if, if an app can do that, there has to be an internal way in the city for them to be able to track when, when these reports come in and when they're, when they're being addressed. Because no, no one area deserves to be addressed before another. So I think the role of the city councillor is the availability and listening to the concerns of the constituents. But then additionally, making sure that there is accountability in things getting repaired in a timely manner and ensuring that oh, there isn't one area favored over another. And whether it's because of personal relationships or not, I think it's important to have good working relationships. But you need, we need to have processes in place and there needs to be accountability and transparency.
Okay, what about those big salary reclassifications the councillor gave to seven or eight department heads between 30 and 50% more than they were making? What did you think of those salary increases, Common?
So that's actually another instance of where I think it was a lack of transparency. There was very little conversation about how that decision was made. We know what the outside experts said, we know what that data showed. Yet these reclassifications still happen. And then they had to go back and vote again because people spoke up. And I know the light was the, were the first to report on that and really brought attention to it. Again, it is a matter of transparency and participatory government. Folks, it is important to them how their tax dollars are being spent. And they have a say on how and what we do with that budget. So again, I think that was, we need transparency. We need to know how these decisions were reached.
Okay, Sean, what did you think about those big raises, the 30 to 50% raises? Did council make a mistake on those?
Well, I'm glad that for the most part, we're calling them reclassifications instead of raises, because that's what they were, they were reclassifications. But it's easier to just say that they're raises. But I think that they, they pushed those through relatively quick. I, I've sat in a few city council meetings and there's a, this processes where, you know, it's an appointments and briefings, it comes out of appointments and briefings and all these things. So it's, it just seemed like it happened relatively fast. And almost as if it was pushed through to, to, and maybe it wasn't going to be seen or heard of. But amount, we talk about amounts like that. There are, there are a few people in the city that, that make that amount of money on a, on a yearly income. So that's when, when the constituents are hearing $50,000. That's, that opens up a lot of eyes. And so I applaud the, the residents who really spoke out in disgust of what had happened. And I also applaud the, the city council for revisiting it. But it is an issue that I think still has to be revisited.
Okay, staying on this a little bit longer, Mayor Mitchell has complained about this. And he wants to go back on this reclassification issue. And he wants to tie it to a law the council passed last year, or maybe it was the year before, in which new city employees that are hired automatically receive a 10% pay cut if they do not agree to move to the city. He says that that hurts the city when they're trying to attract particularly high level professional employees, like the chief financial officer, the DPI head, or the head of computer programming. They may have their kids in a school system that is considered better than New Bedford's. And you're saying, we're not going to hire you unless you, we're going to give you a 10% penalty right off the bat when you come in. If you don't move to New Bedford, that was a unanimous vote of the council. Was that a good idea?
So I, I can understand what the council was trying to accomplish there. But at the same time, they're deterring a lot of good candidates for coming. I feel that anyone who's willing to come in and really help the city in different aspects, whether it be our law enforcement or some department heads or things like that. I welcome that. I welcome anybody who wants to come into the city, whether they live here or not, to really do the job, especially when we're having a tough time filling these positions as it is.
Common, what do you think? Is the 10% penalty for people who are hired in New Bedford a good idea?
Well, I think we want to attract the best talent, the people with the most qualifications and the best skills to get the job done, to move the city in the right direction. That's critical. I don't see that happening by giving those people a pay cut if they're not moving into the city. However, you could incentivize moving into the city within a certain amount of time. Because I understand that you want to live in a community, understand how it fits for you and your children and your family. And if there is some kind of incentive, whatever that may be, for someone to move into the city, that may be an alternate way of looking at this, still attracting the best talent.
Okay, I'm just going to take a second here. I got a message from someone named David, I don't know who that is. But he says that he's getting a glare off Sean's glasses. I don't, it doesn't bother me, I can see a little bit of a, a circle over your glasses. So you might want to consider taking them off or keep, keep them on. It doesn't, you know, he's, this guy's just calling.
I'm, I'm, I'm less attractive, Jack, without my glasses.
I mean, in my case, there's only so much you can do. So moving on, the city council recently narrowly rejected Mayor Mitchell's nomination of Carol Pimentel to serve on the Volk Tech School Committee. Common Yara, a Volk Tech educator, Carol was agreed by everybody to be qualified. She's a Volk Tech graduate herself, UMass Dartmouth administrator, a professional accountant. The issue seemed to be that she supported a lottery for the Volk Tech, which is under a federal civil rights lawsuit because of the admissions policies being deemed unfair to English language learners and disabled students. The mayor says he wants to put that nomination back, although it's been dismissed. And I don't know how quickly he can get it back. But the mayor says he wants to put that nomination back. And this, whoever is the new Ward three council could be the, he vote on this. What's your, what's your position on Carol Pimentel's nomination? Should that, that have gone through?
Well, just like you said, she has the resume and the skills to be a leader. She has that connection to Volk Tech. She's a graduate, I understand it wasn't in the, you know, five years ago. But there's still something to be said, you're, it's when it's your alma mater. So she's from the community, she cares deeply about the community. Everything points to her being a good candidate for the vocational school. Again, what I've heard from some, some folks at New Bedford Volk Tech is that they, they like Carol, they think she has great qualifications. But they feel like there's this lack of transparency in how that process of selecting, the mayor selecting who he's going to put forth. Then they want that, they want transparency, they want, they want to understand that process. Because this is a person that will help guide the direction of the school and impact the children in the community. But in terms of Carol's qualifications, yeah, I would have, I would have voted to support that.
I'm sorry, there was a lack of transparency on Carol's selection? What do you mean by that?
So folks submitting applications, how did he narrow down applicants? Is there a way to narrow down applicants and then present it to the school committee and have those folks go into session and make a determination? Should it move into being an election? Those types of things, how, how did he land on Carol?
Well, it's the mayor's nomination to make and the councils to approve. It's not an election, it's not a, it's not an elective process, it's a nomination process. He, he selected her and he selected someone that the council rejected before, another Cape Verdean nominee. The, the issue is the lottery, that the council doesn't, the majority of councillors did not support the lottery. That, that's, I, I did not hear transparency until tonight, so that's the first time I've heard that.
Some of the educators, that's, that's been their concern is, you know, how, how did he select Carol? How, how did he, he land on that? And, and.
Would that go for Jack Livermento, who was a sitting New Bedford School Committee member who he had nominated before?
That would go for anybody that he nominates, yeah, people want transparency.
Okay, Sean, what about Carol Pimento? Should that nomination have gone through and what are your thoughts on it?
Well, I mean, we, we talk about trying to find qualified candidates for certain positions. And as you sit back and you talk about Carol, I think that she is a qualified candidate for this position. I think the biggest taboo is obviously that lottery system. People are kind of, you know, the model of vote right now is working. And they, they want that to continue. Unfortunately, with the pending legal action that may change. Some, some folks may want that to play out in court and see how that, that, you know, are they, are we going to be made to, to make this change? But I think that the change is coming. I think that Carol has the qualifications. And she was also open to, she did say that she was open to discussion, that she's not dead set on these things. So she's, she is open to discussing this before anything is really determined. And I just think that the lottery system right now seems to be the most fair, I should say, to get some different folks that wouldn't have perhaps been able to attend a vote. Where I am very, I've worked with a lot of people that can learn stuff through teaching. And then I've learned, I've seen, I've worked with a lot of folks that are more doers with their hands and, and they, they thrive that way. So I think the vocational school is definitely a key part in that, especially in a community like New Bedford with its diversity and, and all that we have to offer as far as skilled jobs like that.
Okay, I, I'm not hearing a yes or no from either one of you. Yes or no?
Yes, I, yes, I, I would have still voted yes on Carol Pimento.
Common?
Jack, I did say that yes, I absolutely would have supported.
All right, very good. So let's, let's hone down on this just a little bit more. What about the lottery? You're a Volk Tech educator, although it's more suburban type system than an urban system. Is our Volk, regional Volk Techs admitting enough disabled and English language learners? In the case of New Bedford, it's Latino students, are they, do they have equal opportunity to get into the Volk Techs?
So you actually have to look at the student populations at each of these schools. Because in some schools, you, you will see a swing. And in others, you see them pretty representative of the sending communities. So, so when you're looking at data, you want to make sure you're comparing apples to apples. In terms of the issue with vocational schools is there are not enough seats at all. So a lottery may be a short term solution. I know that the previous vocational school I worked at, they actually ran a simulation using Power BI to see what it would look like in, if they had done a lottery. And it would have been more boys, more male students than female students. And they were about 50/50 with greater male applicants. And it would have swayed into more discrepancies in terms of the other race and socioeconomic groups. But again, that's one model, so you have to look at others. The solution, one of the solutions absolutely is you need more seats. You need more vocational technical programs. There, there's a Senate and a House document to earmark money for funding vocational programs. Adding vocational programs to comprehensive high schools, fully accredited Chapter 74 programs, and building new vocational schools. There is a demand, because like we were talking earlier, there is less of a return on investment in a four, going into a four-year institution, being in debt. And the, how difficult it has been to find a job. So we want to give everyone the opportunity, we want to give everyone, every single student the opportunity to pursue a vocational education, but we need more seats.
Okay, so how do you get more seats? I mean, you could build out a school, but that's going to take 10 years. And the seats are going to be down.
You build new schools, you build new programs, there are some programs called after dark programs. That's what some schools call it. Students there are on waiting lists, they start vocational programs. They, they get their hands wet essentially in after school or evening programs. That's one way, there isn't a, a quick fix. A lottery also wouldn't increase the number of seats.
No, it just, it just gives, it makes, it's like grades and discipline and attendance are not the main obitaries. So that you have all the kids with challenges in the regular high school and the kids who really end up planning on going to college are not getting into the Volk Tech. Just very briefly, Sean, a lottery, you supportive of it? Yes, no?
I, I think that the admissions has to, has to change. I think a lottery is a, again, a, something that's worth pursuing. Because you, you are going to get some diversity as far as kids that are able to come in, different learning and skill sets. I know that it's a very stressful time as both my daughter and stepdaughter have both applied and gone to Volk. My daughter graduating in 2020, my stepdaughter currently is a junior there. So the, the admissions process is a very stressful time to get those, those letters. I think it's, it would take a little bit of the stress if it's more of a blind lottery type system from the, from the kids. And, but I think it's definitely something that we can try, even if it's, even if it's short term. So as of right now, I would be a supporter of it. But if we get some data back and it, that's not really what's working, then maybe that we have to seek other avenues.
Alrighty, let's move on. Let's go to Sean first for this one. Two years ago, the treasurer of the police union pled guilty to embezzling more than $50,000 in union funds. Related to that same case, about $674,000 in police union funds was identified in an audit as missing. That money has never been identified. The president and vice president of the police union resigned suddenly. We have a new police union president. But there's never really been an explanation of that, that's those hundreds of thousands of dollars. Would you support an investigation of wherever that union money went? And why have we never gotten any answers on that?
Well, I, I think in any type of system, whether it be our police, our city council, transparency is key. So the people of the city are trusting us as elected officials and first responders and things like that, to have a certain amount of trust. So to have, to, in order to do that, we have to be transparent. And I, I know that as a taxpayer, I'd like to know where the money is going. So I would be a supporter of that.
Yeah, this was union dues, so I'm not sure it's tax money, but it's still.
I'm just saying, as, 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 as a, as somebody who pays taxes, I want to know where my money's going. So I would assume that people would want to know where that money is going as well.
Certainly, police union members have told us that they'd like to know where, where the money went.
I've spoken to a few as well.
Yeah, but what about that? Treasurer of the police union, please guilty to embezzlement. But then there's another $674,000 of funds that's never been explained where that money is. What, you know, what's your take on what's going on with the police union? Does there need to be an investigation?
Well, as someone who paid union dues and wanted to know where my money was going, absolutely. I mean, I've been saying all along that I think it's absolutely critical to have both transparency and accountability. So yes, I would support an investigation.
Okay, we've been reading recently that the police department is in crisis with a shortage of manpower. They have people who are having to work shifts where there is not the collective bargaining agreement complement of, of officers on the street. Both the police chief and the mayor have said that part of the reason is because of all the publicity nationally about police brutality cases in recent years, a lot of people don't want to become officers anymore. Do we have a, a crisis, not just New Bedford, but in policing? That is causing us not to get enough police officers? And what can we do about that, Common? Let's go to you first.
So I think we absolutely have a crisis. We have a substance abuse crisis, we have mental health, we have exorbitant costs of living where people are homeless. I think we need to address root causes of crime. And that will decrease crime and that will decrease the pressure put on police officers. I've said this repeatedly, that I think that public servants, first responders, fire, police EMS, they're critical for a safe society. So we need to address these root causes so that they are not overburdened. We want them to be able to go out and do their jobs effectively. And I recently spoke with Sheriff Haroga, his endorsement. And because we share these similar, similar views on addressing the root causes of crime and in turn, keeping our police officers safe.
What, what about the officers themselves? Do they need more training in how to de-escalate a, a tense situation? I mean, it, it just seems that there are many, there's always been good young men and women who want to be law enforcement officers, it's an important job. And do we need some training on de-escalation? So that, that we don't have these, these cases that we seem to see one after another with the video cameras?
Well, I, I think police officers are professionals, just like I think teachers are professionals. You ask teachers what they need, the kind of training they need, and they will tell you. And if police officers feel like they need more training and de-escalation techniques because of the kinds of things that they're encountering, then we need to provide that.
Okay, Sean, I know you've received the police union's endorsement, we're going to get to that in a minute. But as far as the numbers, is this a public safety issue for the city not having enough offices? As a full complement that they're supposed to have? And do we have a crisis that people don't want to become officers because of all this publicity about police brutality?
Yes, and yes. Yes, this is a public safety issue. We have, I think we're down approximately 50, almost 50 officers right now. And from the 90s, the officer, officer count in the 90s was somewhere around 300, in the, in the low 300. So that we've had a decrease and then there's been a decrease from that. So, but the, the problem is, Jack, that long gone are the days of kids growing up and having these dreams of becoming a police officer or a firefighter or things like that, maybe not so much a firefighter, but definitely some form of law enforcement. You know, I, I grew up in a time where there were waiting lists to be a New Bedford police officer. You needed prior military experience to get a bump up. Heck, you may have even needed to know somebody already in the department to get your foot in the door. And I think it starts with the, within the community. I think we have to foster an environment that is inviting to both officers, where they would want to come out into these scenarios and put their lives on the line every day for, for our community. Because the, with, before, without having a sense of pride or a sense of service, it's really a sense of community. And, and they want to, they, to, to go into these communities and, and be, you know, less than welcome. I, it's, it's tough, it's a tough job as it is. And, and anybody who has the ability to try it, I recommend you do that. So they're, they're looking for good men and women, if anybody's interested, get in there.
You're a corrections officer, so you have some experience in this sort of thing. Do we need more training on de-escalation techniques for some of these problematic characters that police may encounter on the streets?
You know, law enforcement's a thankless job. And like you said, I probably work in one of the most thankless forms of it. We, we work on de-escalation a lot within the walls of a, of a state facility. Because that's really the only tactic that we have. We don't go in there with much. A lot of the things that people see in movies are just that, movies. So de-escalation is key. But again, I think it, it still goes back to a community issue where people are a little bit more confrontational with, with officers. And there's obviously evidence that supports that maybe they should be a little bit more on guard. But you, we can be pro law enforcement and still be able to hold bad cops accountable too, so.
All right, so we had Sean under the spotlight a little bit with these police issues. Let's go to Common on school issues. Now, I know that you're not running for school committee, but the, the city council does vote on important school policy issues like the overall budget and whether we're going to have charter schools. The charter schools in New Bedford continue to be enormously popular. Many parents just feel that they don't feel like they're getting what they need in some of the city schools. And whether it's Alma Delmar or Global Learning Charter Schools, they're, they're popular. Alma in particular has long waiting lists, they just opened a second school. A few years ago, they were willing to open a neighborhood charter school. And the teachers' union worked assiduously against it. And a group that you've been associated with, Save Our Schools, worked against it. But there are many people who want these charter schools and feel like they are playing a role in delivering some alternative approaches to education that the, the school district schools are not giving. And in particular, the neighborhood charter school would solve the problem of some charters, sort of like the Volk Tech, taking the, the cream of the crop of the students, the, the ones with the most engaged parents. What, what is your position on charter schools? Do we need to be a little bit more open to them? Or are they just draining the resources of the district?
Well, first of all, the proposal for the neighborhood charter school would have had students automatically go in there, parents would have to opt out. What we need to do is we need to invest in our public schools. If we invest in our public schools rather than a parallel system, then we improve the services that we provide in our public schools. There is an incredible teacher shortage. People enrolling in teacher prep. There is an incredible teacher shortage. Uh people enrolling in teacher prep, teacher preparatory programs, that those numbers are decreasing, right? So we need to invest in public schools. We need to make sure that teachers have the tools they need to provide the absolute best services for children, not invest money in a parallel system.
So uh you affirm that you're against that. Sean, what about you? Is there a role for for charter schools in the New Bedford system? I will point out that charter schools are public schools. They're just not district schools according to Massachusetts law. Um uh they seem to be popular. Uh should 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 the um uh the city be a little more open to them?
Uh well, I I know quite a few um folks that have had their children go to um charter schools. And it's much like a a a vote system where it's, you know, picking the the cream of the crop. Uh but so sometimes the kids, it's not so much maybe the kids that want to go there. It's more of the the parents wanting a better education for their for their uh kids. Um it's almost kind of like uh what Catholic school used to be. You know, you send your kids to a Catholic school. You you pay to go to the Catholic school, you get a little bit more of a in-depth education um than you would in the in the public school system. But um I think that their their results that they're putting out are very are at a high level. The graduation level is great, the the scores that are coming out of these schools are great. But tenfold, we do have a public school issue where you're seeing it with the vote. Kids are just trying to apply to vote just so they don't have to go to New Bedford High or something like that. So there are, I think we can continue to work with charter schools and try to find the happy medium.
Yeah, I want to point out a couple of things. Um you 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 said you alluded to something on VOTEC. A lot of people are applying to VOTEC. What they say is just to stay away from the fights at New Bedford High School. I'm not saying that's the reality. That's the perception out there and it's a problem. And as far as charter schools are doing better, they do do better sometimes, but there are New Bedford district schools, in- including inner city schools that score every bit. I'm thinking of the Clongdon School, score every bit as good as any of the charter schools. A a lot of it seems to depend on the principals. I want to move on to one other aspect of the schools that that the city council votes on, and that's on union contracts. We have had the paraprofessionals um uh protesting um in recent months, not only because they 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 say that they're underpaid and um uh not respected enough, but also because they, there's been talk of a lawsuit over of a diaper duty because they say that's appropriately a nurse's uh role, not the um paraprofessionals, although they say they're willing to do it. But they were expected to do it without it being part of their contract. Um what uh do we need to pay the paraprofessionals? Is it past the time to treat them better? Or is there a limit to what the property taxpayers in New Bedford can can afford to do? What's what's your position on paraprofessionals? Sean?
So so as 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 someone who uses the services that our paraprofessionals provide with my son, um he attends the uh Campbell School um up in the city's north end because he's one of the uh, he has a autism uh diagnosis. So we've been navigating that. Um and there is this, there is an absolute shortage. Um and it's mainly reflected upon the contract negotiations that have been falling short. Um these these folks, some of the work they do is, it's it's it truly is uh to for, not to, you know, be cliche, it is God's work. They are going in to these to these um with these students that do need the extra care, the extra learning and the extra um um hands-on um that they can't get in a regular classroom or with regular chi- teachers. Um my my son, for example, is, he they get these prescribed hours with their I E Ps, their individual education plans. And um some days they get the proper prescribed uh times with these uh folks. Other days they either double down or don't, we don't see them for a couple of days because they're spread so short throughout the school department. Um it's, these folks want to help. They're going elsewhere. They're going to places like Fall River where the pay is much more competitive. Um I think that the the taxpayers have no problem paying more if they see results in what they're paying for.
Okay, common, uh is it uh are the paraprofessionals undervalued and can the property taxpayers afford to pay them more?
Paraprofessionals are educators. Paraprofessionals take care of students every day. They help with content, social emotional needs. They depending on types of programs, uh they may do things like assist with toileting, et cetera. So of course, yes, they need to be compensated. Uh they are educators at every level, are also public servants. And like I said, a budget is a moral document and represents the values. And I understand that the money is finite. Um so we need to make those kinds of decisions. We need the constituencies, people need to uh make, be vocal about what they want that money spent on. So paraprofessionals absolutely deserve raises. They've been getting um thirty to fifty percent raises in some areas of the state.
All right, so let's let's stay on property taxes for a bit. Um the the mayor is fond of saying that seventy eighty percent of the city budget is tied up in uh union contracts, whether in in state laws. Uh whether it's um the salaries of the employees, the um uh the health insurance uh or the um pensions um which are 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 not, um the city is not up to speed on 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 the rate of its funding of the pensions. Uh uh where would you, i- is it is it possible to even control property taxes or or or, you know, it really i- everyone talks about controlling them, but they never, they always seem to go up. What would you do to control property taxes? Common?
Well, I think people understand that they have to pay taxes and when they see a return on that investment, then they are okay. If they're paid, if they're paying property, high property taxes and they're not seeing a return on investment, um that that becomes problematic. And absolutely that we do have uh high property taxes in New Bedford and we need to consider ways in which to help that. And one of those ways might be to bring in uh businesses, of course. Um.
What about um uh the the unions have uh declined to um consider a state health plan that would um give some options for more affordable healthcare? Do you think, none of the councils has supported that? The mayor puts it back before the council every year. Should the the city uh consider the more affordable state health insurance plan?
I think you give the folks, again, who are protecting the community, the teachers, the fire, the police, um that they get the best health insurance possible. They're they're a self-contained system. The city pays part of it. They pay part of it. And I would support that it stay that way.
Okay, Sean, how about you? Uh uh property taxes are high. Most of it is in collective bargaining and state mandates for the pensions and the health insurance. Should the um city consider uh uh the cheaper health insurance that that uh you know, that some of the younger employees might be able to benefit from from the state? Uh the unions have opposed that.
Well, uh so our property taxes are high, absolutely. I think that we ask for a lot from our uh taxpayers. Um we do need to grow our commercial base. That's the only way that taxes are going to come down. You have these other towns surrounding us that are benefiting from New Bedford's residents. I know myself have traveled to both towns, Dartmouth and Fairhaven, to do business in some of those big box stores. Um they're reaping all the benefits of the city. Um with our residents going there, even the buses leaving our city to drop them off there. So um we need to attract new business. So we'd have to really open, crack, roll up our sleeves and figure out how we're going to do that. That's the only way that taxes are gonna come down. As far as the health insurance, I am actually uh part of the state health plan, the G I C, that the mayor is trying to kick our residents back into. Um I can tell you this, I have changed my health insurance three times in open enrollment because I have yet to find a proper plan that suits my needs. Um it's a it's a tough system to navigate. Um the city is uh the the plan that they have right now works. And I don't think that the money that would be quote unquote saved is uh going to even make a a drip in the bucket.
Okay, so. You know, people, people, both of you talked about um uh growing the tax base. Uh but even the advanced manufacturing center, which is to be located in Ward Three, if they could ever get any bids, would only bring in another million dollars worth of tax taxes a year and the city budget is almost a half a billion a year. Uh where 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 are we gonna get this revenue from? The waterfront has some possibilities, Hicks Logan, but um I don't know. Uh that guy uh at the candidate's night last week talked about developing the uh airport, which has never made much money as a massive um uh uh business park. It does seem like that everybody talks about revenue, but how realistic is it really for the city to bring in a lot more revenue? If even the big project like the advanced manufacturing center is only gonna bring in another million dollars a year? Sean, let's go with you first.
Well, I mean, I let's 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 use uh a neighbor, uh Fall River, for example. Uh the the Harbor Mall was in disrepair for so long, it had no residents and this and that, and you go there now, it looks amazing. There's so many businesses in there, there's so many different, you can uh shop, eat, drink, uh go to the dollar store, go to get your Starbucks. And we have a very similar property, something on King's Highway, that is just empty after empty after empty. Uh we, I think there's 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 two doll, the Family Dollar, Dollar General and Dollar Tree, all within a stone's throw away from each other. Uh is is, those are businesses and that's great, but I don't think that that's what that's what we need. But we we do have these other areas that are benefiting from our residents and our money is going to to there. So I think it's not, it's it's not unrealistic because if they're able to do it, then why isn't New Bedford able to do it?
Well, Hathaway Road, which is in Ward Three, uh has the building nineteen or building nineteen property. And what I hear is the only thing slated to go in there is storage facilities. So um is it really realistic to say we have to bring in more revenue when when nothing is coming in? Common, your turn.
Um I do buy all my plants at Klein Greenhouse uh when they're open season. Just to be clear, I think they're great. Uh but I think it is realistic to say that we need to bring in more revenue and it is our job to find ways to do that. So I, one thing that you people say in education is uh there's no idea is your idea. Um we need to communicate with other cities that have been successful and come together and use the collective knowledge and skills to come up with a plan to increase this. Now additionally, we also um have the fair share amendment passed. So some of those dollars can be used there specifically for infrastructure and schools. So that does not offset our uh our current tax problems, but that is another source of income of revenue to come into the city for those types of projects.
So no, no take is on a massive uh a business park at the airport uh tonight. Uh I I see, I it it does seem like an outlandish ideas, but when you when you when you think of it, you know, maybe sometimes you do have to think out of the out of the box. Um let's move on to endorsements. We've had a lot of endorsements coming this week. Um uh common, you had endorsement from um uh New Sheriff Haro. Uh Sean, you had endorsements from the police union and also from the ASME union. Uh I know I'm gonna forget some. I think common, you had Shane Burgo. Sean, you have um helped me here. Uh uh.
Oh, we got.
And um.
Uh Robert Cabral, former candidate um in this race, who, you know, absolutely worked his butt off. He really, he made me work harder, to be honest with you. I felt like I was five minutes behind that guy every 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 day. So the numbers that um he was able to garner in this election uh didn't do his work justice. So I just wanna tip my cap, the cap to him because he made me work this this hard.
And also Kathy Dana, but so so let's hold it in on some of them. So the the police uh union endorsement, then the um uh ASME endorsement, why do you think that they they liked you? What?
Um, you know, I I think.
I always worry that they're gonna be expecting something.
Right, we're gonna, we're we're gonna, I I can't um continue without addressing um my uh, the Massachusetts Department of Corrections and Mukufu unit uh uh union, the Massachusetts Correction Officers Federated Union came out and endorsed me, actually was the the first union to do so.
Uh just so people will know, that is a union that supplies offices to the county correction office.
It's it's one of, it's, I believe it's actually the largest law enforcement union in Massachusetts with thirty three hundred um uh members. Uh and like you said, they, the that our union represents the the um the people who work for Sheriff Haro. So it's kind of a, you know.
What 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 do these endorse, these these unions endorsements, why do you think you got them and how do you plan to remain independent of them?
Well, I I think that that I I plan to remain independent the same way that I got them. And it's just proving that I am a hardworking, blue collar guy and I'm here to make sure that those folks, it's not about favors or it's not about this or that, it's just that the these folks are the literal backbone of our city. Um especially the ASME um union where they're kind of like the unsung heroes. We don't really think about them too much, but when your water isn't working or something is is wrong, uh you know, on the the street level or at the clerk's office or things like that, that's when we think about them. But they, these are the literal people that keep our city um moving forward. Um and uh I I think that they just recognize that, you know, I'm a hardworking individual, much like themselves. And uh hopefully they, I see a little bit of myself in them and they see a little bit of myself, themselves in me.
So common, you got the endorsement of uh Sheriff Haro, who has um fashioned himself a a former, a reformer uh of the uh of the county jail system. Uh is that how you see yourself? Do you see yourself as a a reformer when it comes to law enforcement?
Uh I see myself as someone who believes that systems need to be transparent and there needs to be accountability. Um so Sheriff Haro uh endorsed me because we have uh very similar views on addressing root causes. Um I also have endorsements from the New Bedford Support Specialist Union, the Labor Council, Painters, C S J, Democratic City Committee, Scott Lima, Melissa Costa and Shane Burgo. And you know, folks, elected officials, um understanding what it takes to, and the skills and qualifications necessary to be um on a city council. I'm I'm honored for that. And these, I have a diverse group of folks who are endorsing me because of of my beliefs, my hard work, being from um being from the city, understanding the community, growing up in poverty, working class, my education. These folks understand my values and what I want to do for the city. And I'm I'm flattered that I've had canvassing events and people that I don't know that have been following my campaign, showing up, introducing themselves, um offering to go door knocking because they also believe in what I believe in.
Okay, and you've also been uh active before the campaign with uh Save Our Schools. And um I have a comment coming in here from Joanne that that says she believes the, she got a phone call from Massachusetts Teachers Association supporting you. So the the, how would you be able to um disagree with them or stand up to the teachers' union where sometimes people have different opinions? Whether it's charter schools or or just um union contracts? How would you be independent of the teachers?
Um because I am a professional, so when people are elected or when people are hired, they do their job. Um you can, as you can see, my endorsements are from a a variety of different groups. And I go in and I vote on what I believe is right. That is, that is my duty. I I hope that everyone, every single elected official feels that way, understands that that is their duty and their responsibility.
All right, um just uh in the interest of seeing this, I common listed a a line of endorsements. Are there anybody that I forgot, Sean, in your your list that you want to mention?
No, uh I entered this not knowing uh some of the players and we've we've listed pretty much everything. There may be a few other in the works that may come out last minute, but uh as of right now, uh that's what we have and I appreciate them.
Very good. Um we'll move on to another question. Um and this question is homelessness. Uh homelessness uh seems to be an insoluble problem in New Bedford as as well as other places. Today, we had a big conference at the Whaling Museum, more than a hundred and fifty people attending, many of them social workers and people who work with the homeless. Um uh listened to a um an advocate from New Jersey where they have one big place to um uh have one-stop shopping for homeless issues. Um but we we see the homeless, whether it's at the intersections, uh pen handling, we see them in some of the city parks. Um it it does seem to be a problem connected to mental illness or substance abuse. Um what what are your thoughts on homelessness and who deserves to be helped, who doesn't deserve to be helped and how we should help them? Sean, let's start with you.
Well, yeah, I I think any, they all deserve to be helped, I think. Um that for one reason or another, they're they're out there. Um we we tend to open the our doors a little bit more with the cold shelters and things like that when it's a very cold night. Um I think that we just have to do a little bit more outreach on a consistent basis. What what do those folks do after? Um we we'll take them in, but then, okay, well, it's eleven o'clock, you know, see you later, you know, and they're back out there. Um and that's not just at at cold times, uh but we did, we need to do a better job in assisting these these folks, but it is a community issue. They are members of the community that have, for one reason or another, uh have either fallen on on high times with substance abuse, mental uh health issues or combination of the two. Um the biggest thing is getting them the support that they need and follow-up, wraparound services far as uh maybe maybe a little bit more, um like you said, that I think that was a great idea, having all the services in one particular area. Because that's been the biggest thing is the navigating through this. And a lot of these folks are are embarrassed and and don't, you know, don't partake in some of the services because of that. It's not because they want to be or they have, you know, it's just um they they have to be and they're 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 worried on on uh on on being embarrassed that they have to ask for these these. on, on, uh, on, on being embarrassed that they have to ask for these, these, these services. But that's the biggest thing, is getting them the services and the following up with them.
Common, what, what about homelessness? Uh, one of the speakers today said that, that homelessness is a housing issue, and these people with mental, uh, illness or, or substance abuse issues need to be housed. And, and that's, that's mainly the, the big problem. There's a lot of complaints of inappropriate behavior in the downtown, some other areas. Um, what, what, what do you think should be done for homelessness in the city?
Well, absolutely, uh, permanent housing is critical. Uh, having folks go in on, on a freezing cold night, that's important, that's a temporary fix, that's a Band-Aid. Uh, but you, people need the medical treatment, they need the substance abuse treatment, they need to address traumas, they need training, they need those wraparound services. Like you give wraparound services to students, uh, they start transition planning, students on I E Ps, uh, at fourteen, they sit down and start working about their transition plan and start moving, what's gonna happen after high school? What kind of services might you need? Are you eligible for? Folks need those supports, and, uh, you had asked previously, who deserves that? Uh, humans, humans deserve that help.
Yeah, so, so, if, if, if you're, uh, in the throes of, um, alcoholism or a drug addiction, you believe you still, um, but deserve help?
Yes, uh, addiction, addiction is an illness.
Yes, I, 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 I think everybody is just one help away from greatness. So, um, I think you just need to meet that person or meet that program, um, to, um, to, to, to overcome.
Okay, a few years ago, Mayor Mitchell, uh, constructed these staggered cobblestones at the gateway to the city in the octopus. You may have seen them, uh, so that the panhandlers could not walk up and down the streets on what he called the gateway to the city. Well, guess what, it didn't work. The panhandlers still walk up and down, whether it's in the south end at the octopus. I think there's another one over by, uh, Route Six, um, near Rockdale Avenue. How do you feel, uh, anybody who wants to go first on this one? How do you feel about those cobblestones? Did the mayor make a mistake, uh, uh, putting them in?
Yes.
Well, I, yeah, I, go ahead, Common, go ahead.
That, that was a mistake. Uh, again, I, I think you need to address, uh, causes of homelessness. You, you need to address root causes, you need to understand what's going on. Uh, spending money on those stones as maybe a deterrent was not a good idea.
Sean?
Well, I think, I think it was a little bit of a waste. Uh, I think we have to address the problem instead of just kind of address the, well, we don't want them here. Okay, well, kudos to them for persevering and overcoming, because I, the cob, the cob, the cobblestones at different heights, it, it's got a piece of wood and stood on top of the piece of wood on the, uh, you know, so these people are not, they're smart people, they're, they're able to adapt and still, um, do what they need to do. Um, so again, I think that it was just addressing the, we don't want them standing here, um, instead of addressing, well, why are they standing here?
All right, so what, a, a related issue, we'll call it NIMBY issue, not in my backyard. Um, we recently had a controversy where the entire city council and the mayor, um, uh, came out against having a suboxone clinic in the downtown, saying that would hurt the town's, downtown burgeoning tourism industry. Um, it's about a block from the new Frederick Douglass Park. Um, other people said, no, you have significant substance abuse problem in New Bedford, and these people need your help. And there already is one in the downtown near the historic district. So what about suboxone clinics, um, and methadone clinics and other substance abuse treatment centers? Um, where in Ward Three, would you accept them? And what do you think about the NIMBY issues? Was that with you, Sean?
Well, um, I, I think that, um, it, it, it is, it's a necessary, um, um, program to have. We actually deal with it, um, at the state level, um, inside, uh, the, uh, the Massachusetts Department of Corrections. We, we have suboxone, uh, clinics that, uh, people, um, uh, use on a daily basis. Um, these people are people that are seeking help. Um, if they're not going to, um, seek it there, they're going to seek it in other ways, and it's gonna pour out into our neighborhoods. Um, so I think it's a way that we can control that. Um, I don't think that downtown is perhaps the, um, best location for it, as, you know, we, we, we're destination New Bedford, we want people to come in. And that's not something that is, um, really appealing. And also, it kind of puts the people that are using those services, um, kind of in, uh, the spotlight. These are folks that have, that are mothers, fathers, friends, neighbors, and they're seeking help. And here they are kind of, you know, being put out there as, oh, look, there goes so-and-so. Um, so I don't think that's, it, it's, it's so much, uh, these people.
And Ward Three would be a good place for them.
Um, I mean, to be honest with you, the, the only thing, I mean, we have, uh, we have, uh, right now, High Point down by, in Hicks Logan right now. Um, if that's, if, if that's an area that is, I mean, this space, we know that there's space there. Um, uh, but, uh, I, 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 I think that that would be a, uh, a, a useful area. Um, and, uh,
Why not, because we, we're running out of time here, I just want,
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, I think that would be, would be, let's, let's, let's do something there.
Uh, Common, the NIMBY issues, um, in the downtown over the suboxone clinic, what did you think? Um, where, where do we put these things? And it seems like every neighborhood, you put them in, some very nice neighborhoods near the hospital objected to them. Um, we've objected to them in the downtown, even though there's already one in the historic district. They are in Ward Three, as Sean just pointed out, in the Hicks Logan area. Where, where, where do these substance abuse clinics go?
So everyone who has addiction and wants to seek out treatment should have a place where they can go seek that out. Uh, you, you put it where people need it, where there's space. In Ward Three, I think Hicks Logan is an option. Uh, we also are there buildings that are abandoned, we could revitalize their facades. Uh, I, I, I understand folks, uh, speak up and in that not in my backyard argument, but New Bedford is our backyard, so we need to provide treatment for the citizens.
Okay, I'll just point out that, um, Hicks Logan is, that's where they are now, because it's an out-of-the-way place now. But it's also the prime development place where the city wants to do all kinds of marinas, hotels, retail, and, and industrial development. So it's, it's, I don't know how it, both is gonna work. So we have about two minutes left, and I, I guess I'll, I'll give you both an opportunity to bring up an issue that I haven't asked about, that you wished I had asked about. Um, uh, yeah, why don't we do that? Um, uh, Common, is there something that you would have liked to have talked about tonight and I didn't ask?
Uh, so I, I am, uh, I'd like to talk a little bit about the revitalization, uh, on the pier. Uh, I think you just covered it, uh, two things. One is, um, the transparency, again, transparency in government and accountability, uh, for, um, the, uh, agreements that were made. Uh, I know the state legislators, uh, came, spoke out about that. So I think, again, that's another prime example of what we need at all levels of government is transparency. And I think that's a great opportunity for the city, but folks need to have their voice heard. I also, uh, wanna make sure that whatever we do, we don't displace the hard-working people that have been in New Bedford the entire time. The immigrants like myself, the working class, the people who came here for a better life. Um, we want the city to get better, and we want them to get better with it, not move them out. So I think that's gonna be something really important to consider moving forward.
Okay, Sean, is there an issue that I didn't bring up tonight that you would have liked to have talked about? Here, here's your chance to do that.
Uh, no, I think we, I, we talked about the state pier as well, but that's the biggest thing, is just overall transparency, um, especially with our local officials. I think that we're starting to move in the right direction, and, uh, hopefully getting Ward Three the proper representation that it's needed for quite some time is, uh, is also another step in that direction of transparency.
Uh, have, uh, both of you, uh, have we had transparency from both, um, the mayor and the city council in the, in the recent past?
I think that, in, in certain, I think that there, there have been situations. I mean, we talked about some tonight, right? The, um, reclassifications, uh, this deal for the pier. Like I told you, Jack, I know you hadn't heard it before, but folks had told me, um, we, we want transparency. We want to know more about these appointment processes. So I think in lots of situations, you can point to where people felt that, you know what, I want transparency at every level. Uh, they need to hold people accountable if there's a situation where you get lazy, you misstep, and I, may not be intentional, but the constituents are holding people accountable, and that's critical.
All right, Sean?
The, uh, along, along with, along with the transparency, it's not, yes, the transparency is big. The biggest thing is the consistency in the transparency. Where I, I feel that we do a good job in some areas, and then other areas, not so much. And so basically, the, being that constant and, and making transparency a, a continuous, um, uh, issue or pillar of our city government.
Have, have we had it recently from either the mayor's office or the city council?
I, 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 not consistently.
Okay, very good. So my guests for the whole hour have been, uh, Sean Oliver and Common Emerald, two terrific candidates for Ward Three. Both of them have, 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 have worked themselves to, to the bone. Um, I hope the, the voters appreciate it, and, um, we'll look forward to seeing who wins on February twenty-eighth. Thanks very much for taking part in the chat to both of you.
Well, thank you, Jack, and thank you, everybody, for watching and listening.
Thanks, folks, have a good night.
Yeah, good night, guys.